Today is Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025. I'd like to welcome all that are in the Tom Baker Meeting Room this evening and those online to this meeting of the Bismarck Planning and Zoning Commission. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Sarah to call roll.
Commissioner Bitner?
Commissioner Bitner.
Here.
Commissioner Field?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Lukens?
Here.
Commissioner Shell?
Here.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Commissioner Seabock?
Here.
Commissioner Wangan?
Here.
Commissioner Zent?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here. With that, we'll move on to the first item of business in our agenda this evening, which is approval of our meeting minutes from our June 25th meeting. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Larson?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Zent. Any discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we move on to our consent agenda this evening, and we do have a number of items in our consent agenda. The first is Item 2A, which is Lundie Edition, and it's a request for a preliminary plat. Staff recommendation is to call for a public hearing. Item 2B is Boulder Ridge Commercial Edition, and that is a request for a zoning map amendment and a preliminary plat. The recommendation from staff is to call for a public hearing on both. And then we have Item 2C, which is Northern Pacific Edition, Lot 10, Lots 1 through 4, and it is a request for a future land use plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. And staff's recommendation for both is to call for a public hearing. We have Item 2D, William Blackstone Edition. This is a request for a zoning map amendment. Staff's recommendation is to call for a public hearing. We have Item 2E, South Meadows Edition, Third Replat, Block 1, Lots 1 through 10, and that is a request for a future land use plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. Staff's recommendation for both is to call for a public hearing. And finally, we have 2F, which is keeping of chickens within the city limits. This is a request for a zoning ordinance text amendment, and staff's recommendation for this is to call for a public hearing. With that, commissioners, I would like to... Staff has requested that we pull Item 2C for some additional information. So with that, with the remainder of the consent agenda, are there any other items you'd like to pull? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve all items on the consent agenda other than Item C.
Thank you, Commissioner Wangan.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Seabock. With that, any discussion? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Seabock?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we have Item 2C, and I believe Isaac is going to provide us with some additional information.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz and commissioners. For this particular agenda item, the Community Development Department is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the existing RM 30 residential district to the DF Downtown Fringe zoning district, as well as the future land use plan amendment from the current urban neighborhood designation to the downtown or DT designation for lots 1 through 4, Block 10 of Northern Pacific Edition. And as you can see on the screens there, that is the eastern half of that block. So just as some additional background information for why staff are initiating this request, this comes after a development inquiry was brought to the Community Development Department's attention on one of the parcels on that eastern half there that would not be permitted in the existing RM 30 zoning. So after some conversations with that particular landowner and providing them with some options, their preferred path forward was to request the zoning change to the DF Downtown Fringe District. And to maintain consistency with how staff have handled previous zoning changes involving going towards a downtown district, staff have initiated those in the past. And as standard practice, we prefer to do either half a block or a whole block. In this particular case, staff is requesting the eastern half of this block to, again, to maintain consistency with previous standards on how we've handled similar projects. A letter was sent out to the eight relevant property owners who would be affected by this potential change, describing the proposed change as well as listing the primary differences between the existing and proposed districts, and setting up an informational meeting for those property owners to attend, in addition to providing staff contact information to reach out via phone or email. A copy of that letter, as well as the table which was given to the landowners describing the differences between the districts, was included in the staff reports before you. And in general, if we can move to the... That's the future land use portion of this, but if we go to this slide, there. So this is the same table that was included in your staff reports, which is the table that's provided to the landowners, just describing what those differences would look like. In general, all the uses currently existing today would still be permitted in the DF Downtown Fringe, so nothing would be considered nonconforming, and it would provide a little extra flexibility in terms of some more commercial or office uses and dimensional standards such as setbacks or height regulations. And then the future land use plan amendment portion is being requested to, again, maintain some consistency in the proposed zoning and the proposed future land use plan. So other than some ongoing conversations with the original property owner that helped spur this conversation and request, staff have not received any inquiries for additional information from the other property owners, nor have we received any strong indications of support or opposition from those property owners. So if the Planning and Zoning Commission calls for the public hearing as a result of this request, the standard public engagement would move forward, including postcards to the broader neighborhood and Bismarck Tribune publications. So as a cumulative result in the findings today, staff do not find any adverse impact to public health, safety, or general welfare, and do recommend calling for the public hearing on the zoning map amendment and the future land use plan amendment. And I'll stand for questions if you have them at this time.
Commissioners, questions for Isaac. I'm not seeing or hearing any Isaac.
Thank you.
With that, commissioners, for Item Number 2C, staff's recommendation is to call for a public hearing. What are your wishes?
Move to call for a public hearing.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Seabock. Any discussion? Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda this evening. The first item in our regular agenda is 3A, which is Elk Ridge Fourth Edition, and it's a request for a zoning map amendment and final plat. And Jenny is going to provide us with staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Schwartz, commissioners, Section 18 Land LLC is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the Agricultural Zoning District to the R-10 Residential Zoning District and major subdivision final plat titled Elk Ridge Fourth Edition. This request is located northwest of Bismarck between North Washington Street and River Road, east of Tyler Parkway, and north of Frisco Way, and consists of 23.65 acres with 46 lots and five blocks. The applicant has indicated that annexation of the proposed plat will occur at a later date. Building permits for any structures within the plat would not be issued until annexation has been approved and an annexation ordinance is recorded. You tentatively approved the proposed plat and called for a public hearing on the zoning map amendment at your meeting on June 25th. The property has been identified as urban neighborhood in the future land use plan. The urban neighborhood areas are a place of quiet enjoyment of home life. Goals and objectives of this plan, as they relate to the proposed zoning map amendment and plat, are referenced in your staff report. Adjacent land uses include developing residential to the east and south and undeveloped agricultural zone property to the north and west. Lot 1, Block 1 of the proposed plat includes a 30-foot wide access, water main and sanitary sewer easement on the north side of the lot. The access easement would provide the property owner to the west access should they choose to develop in the future. Lot 1, Block 1 is also fully encumbered by a stormwater and drainage easement and will function as a stormwater pond for the development. The stormwater management plan states that the homeowners association for the plat will be developed and would be responsible for regular maintenance of the stormwater pond. Own and maintain the pond as well. Regular maintenance consists of mowing, weed control, and other standard periodic maintenance. The city of Bismarck, however, would be responsible for sediment removal and any needed structural repairs for the stormwater facilities. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Tribune on July 11th and 18th, and 29 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on July 11th. To my knowledge, we have not received any inquiries regarding this request. The request was evaluated according to the standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Code of Ordinances, and state law, and as a result of all the findings contained in the staff report, staff find that the proposed major subdivision plat would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with our comprehensive plan, Code of Ordinances, and state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from the A Agricultural Zoning District to the R-10 Residential Zoning District and major subdivision final plat for Elk Ridge Fourth Edition. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny. I'm not seeing or hearing any.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you. With that, I'm going to open up the public hearing on this particular agenda item. Is either the quester or a representative? I see Landon, you're stepping up there. Can I get you to put your name on the log?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Landon Amler was Swenson Hagan Engineering, representing on this project. Yeah, as Jenny mentioned, this is just one of the next phases of the Elk Ridge developments that are... Couple other places in town as well, in the Elk Ridge area that are not annexed to the city. Not requesting annexation at this point. That's usually, of course, a little bit market-driven, so it depends on what the future holds. But this is just the next phase. It's very similar to what has gone on in previous phases, but I can certainly answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, questions for Landon. I'm not seeing or hearing any, Landon. Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Shell.
Landon, we don't have in the staff report a condition that a turnaround easements are required. In fact, if you want to need to at that end of these dead-end streets, the city just wouldn't permit the streets to be constructed to the edge of the plat limit, so just maybe a consideration to supply those if the intent is to pave or desire to pave most of this area, so more of a cin F Y I.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Shell. It is... It's definitely under consideration, and as we go forward, we'll be ready for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, any additional questions for Landon? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. With that, Jenny, any additional? All right, thank you. Commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendment and a final plat, and staff recommendation is approval for both of those. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wangan?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Zent. Any discussion? And I'm not hearing or seeing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to Item 3B in our regular agenda, which is Boulder Ridge Commercial Edition. This is a request for an annexation, and I believe Lauren is going to provide us with staff briefing this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Schwartz and commissioners. Willment Development LLC and Willment Properties LLC are requesting approval of an annexation of lots 1 through 3, Block 1, and Lot 1, Block 2, Boulder Ridge Commercial Edition. The project area contains 19.89 acres and is located in northwest Bismarck in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of North Washington Street and 43rd Avenue Northeast. This annexation request is in conjunction with a zoning map amendment and a major subdivision plat to facilitate future commercial development in the area. In order to connect to municipal services for any proposed development, the property would need to be annexed. The only reason that this annexation request is separated from the preliminary plat and the zoning map amendment that is also within your packet is due to some timeline considerations for annexation. The property has been identified as community mixed use in the future land use plan. Current adjacent uses include offices, single and two-family residential to the north, single and two-family residential to the east, a church, nursing home, and multifamily residential and retail uses to the south, and a convenience store and undeveloped commercial land to the west across North Washington Street. Annexations do not have a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The public will be notified of this request before it's heard with the City Commission, however, as will Burleigh County and Hay Creek Township in accordance with certain provisions within North Dakota Century Code. To my knowledge, staff has not received any formal comments at this time regarding this request. The request was evaluated according to standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Code of Ordinances, and state law. The proposed annexation incorporates land that has been designated as expansion priority 2 and is clearly contiguous to the existing corporate limits with 100% of the proposed annexation's perimeter adjoining. Creation of new lots within the city of Bismarck is subject to development capital charges for municipal utilities. This annexation request also triggers the held-in-abeyance cost for regional stormwater improvements related to the construction of North Washington Street as well. As a result of all findings contained in the staff report, city of Bismarck staff find that the proposed annexation would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, Code of Ordinances, and state law. Based on the above findings, staff recommends approval of the annexation of lots 1 through 3, Block 1, and Lot 1, Block 2, Boulder Ridge Commercial Edition. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren. Commissioner Shell?
Lauren, can you maybe elaborate on the timing component? Because if this board approves the annexation of Boulder Ridge Commercial Edition when it doesn't exist yet, because that's just something that we called for a public hearing, maybe you could just elaborate on that piece of it, if you would?
So the annexation would next be forwarded if it were approved by this board as the final consideration, who would next move to the City Commission on their consent agenda. If that were approved at the consent agenda, there's an additional two-week timeframe between that typically... Between that and when it would need to go to a public hearing. This annexation request is based on that timeline, would be proposed to be seen by the City Commission at the end of September. That meeting, if the preliminary plat slash final plat and the zoning map amendment, if it follows the general timeline of what those projects typically go for through both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Commission, it would also be seen on that second meeting in September with the City Commission. So they would align for the final public hearing with the City Commission, all three of those requests.
Okay, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions for Lauren? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Thank you, Lauren. Commissioners, this is a final consideration for this annexation request, and staff recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Seabock. Any discussion, commissioners? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabock?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to Item 3C in our regular agenda, which is Oakland Subdivision, Lot 1, Lot 4. And Jenny is going to provide us with staff briefing this evening.
Thank you. Chairman Schwartz, commissioners, Tanner and Andrea Broderick are requesting approval of a special use permit to increase the allowable area of accessory structures to 3,200 square feet on Lot 4, Block 1, Oakland Subdivision. This request is located north of Bismarck, east of US Highway 83, between 71st Avenue Northeast and 84th Avenue Northeast, along the north side of Gray Fox Lane, and consists of 1.68 acres. The property is owned rural residential and is large enough to have up to 3,200 square feet of accessory buildings with approval of a special use permit. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Tribune on July 11th and 18th, and 56 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on July 11th. To my knowledge, we have not received any inquiries regarding this request. The request was evaluated according to the standards contained within our comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and state law, and as a result of all the findings contained in your staff reports, staff find that the proposed special use permit would not adversely impact public health, safety, general welfare, and is consistent with our comprehensive plan, Code of Ordinances, and state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit to increase the allowable area of accessory structures to 3,200 square feet for Lot 4, Block 1, Oakland Edition... Excuse me, Oakland Subdivision. Do you have questions?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny. I'm not seeing any.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing for this agenda item. Is either the quester or a representative here? Please step up, and if you would put your name on the log and introduce yourself, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, good afternoon. Tanner Broderick, property owner, and appreciate your consideration for the special use permit. Just looking to use the Burleigh County zoning laws that now the Bismarck City, from what I understand, is under jurisdiction to provide, so... Thank you.
Commissioners, questions for Tanner before we let him step away? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Tanner. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, this is a request for a special... And I should ask Jenny, any additional comments?
No, thank you.
Thanks. This is a request for a special use permit. Staff's recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wangan. Commissioner Bitner, would you like to be a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bitner. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. We will move on to Item 3D in our regular agenda, which is Mackenzie and Coffins Edition, Block 91, Lots 1 through 16, and 24 through 29. This is a request for a special use permit, and I believe Isaac is going to provide us with staff briefing.
Yes, thank you again, Chair Schwartz and commissioners. For this regular agenda item, Mann Signs on behalf of McKay Methodist Church is requesting approval of a special use permit for an electronic message center sign, or EMC for short, on the church property there, which is lots 1 through 16 and 24 through 29, Block 91, Mackenzie and Coffins Edition, as well as the vacated alley adjacent to those specific lots. This is located in central Bismarck and along the west side of North 6th Street, as you can see on the screens there, between East Avenue F and East Boulevard Avenue. The property is currently zoned RM 30 residential, and a majority of the land around it contains a variety of residential uses ranging between single-family to smaller apartment buildings. And then there is one office building to the west, and of course, the state Capitol grounds to the north as well. The area in the future land use plan is identified as urban neighborhood, which are described as places for quiet enjoyment of home life, but do permit other things such as religious institutions like a church as well. The sign is being proposed to be located near the intersection of East Boulevard and North 6th Street, with the sign faces being oriented to be east and west, to be primarily viewed from East Boulevard Avenue there, approximately the same location where an existing sign is at the moment. The sign meets the relevant dimensional standards for EMCs, and the applicant has provided a signed statement identifying the relevant operational requirements and sign features, as well as the property owner's intent to meet those ongoing requirements. The public was duly notified of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on June 13th and 20th, and 10 postcards were mailed to nearby property owners on July... Wrote down the wrong dates here. But as a cumulative result of all the findings contained in the staff report, city of Bismarck staff find that the special use permit would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan and Bismarck Code of Ordinances and relevant state law. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the special use permit for the EMC sign on lots 1 through 16 and 24 through 29, Block 91, Mackenzie and Coffins Edition, and the vacated alley adjacent to those lots. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac. I'm not seeing any Isaac, thank you.
I will just correct myself earlier that the postcards were mailed on July 11th and that the publications were on July 11th and 18th, and it was 73 postcards, just to correct my incorrect information earlier.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing for this agenda item. Is either the quester or a representative here? And if you would put your name on the log and introduce yourself, that would be great.
Shannon Schlinger from Mann Signs here. Just looking for your approval on that sign. Wonder if you guys had any questions? I do have a representative here from the church also.
Commissioners, questions for Shannon? Shannon, does the existing sign go away?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so it will be replaced.
It's going to be constructed right behind where the old sign is at.
Okay, thank you.
Currently.
So again, I'll ask, any questions for Shannon? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I am not seeing or hearing anyone, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Isaac, any additional comments?
No, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. With that, commissioners, this is a request for a special use permit. Staff's recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Zent?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. Any additional discussion?
Chair, I do feel like, maybe this is for Isaac, those conditions for being close to residential area, I feel like that's useful for the public in general if someone's watching to go through those. I see we have the signed letter, but those requirements for the electronic sign with 150 feet of residential use, I feel pretty important if someone lives within the area would want to know those things.
and would want to know those things.
Would you like, Commissioner Larson, would you like Isaac to clarify those any more?
Yeah, Isaac, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Certainly. So Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Larson, and Commissioners, there are limits to the brightness of what the sign can have for its maximum illumination at a level of 0.3-foot candles above ambient light levels. There are limits on how long a single image can be, or a minimum timeframe for how long the single image can be shown there before transitioning to another one. There are limits on the types of transitions between images there and between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. They have a couple options, so overnight, they can either turn the sign off, or it can be held on a single image there. There is a prohibition on streaming of video or full-motion video being used on the sign, and for particular sign features, if there were to be a malfunction of some kind, there needs to be a mechanism to display a static message instead, as well as a light detector to adjust the brightness of the sign based off of ambient levels as well. And I will note, as I realize I forgot to mention during my presentation, that staff did receive a few inquiries from the public regarding this sign, asking for more information on this, but after providing that information, we did not receive any public comments, as far as I'm aware.
Thank you, Isaac. Commissioner Larson?
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, Commissioner Shell?
Maybe a follow-up, Isaac. The timeframe between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, is it the entire sign can't be illuminated or just the electronic message component of the sign? I think there's a static piece above the sign. I just want to make sure we're clear on that piece.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Shell, Chair Schwartz, and Commissioners. These requirements would be specifically for the electronic message center portion of the sign. There is that static or portion above as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. So we have a motion on the table, do approve. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, that ends our regular agenda for this evening. We go to item 4, which is other business, and I believe Ben has some information for us this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Just really wanted to give you a preview on a procedural item for actually the city of Bismarck and all of its advisory bodies moving forward. It's a policy that the city of Bismarck adopted related to public comment at their July 8th meeting of this year. Really, it's in response to the last legislative, or the most recent legislative accession, which identifies that all governing bodies in the state have to allow for a public comment period at the beginning of each meeting before the first procedural item takes place. Now, this is, in particular, we have a lot of public input opportunities. Those are typically done through, at this meeting, typically done through a public hearing process that will continue. However, we do have often, as in the case today, various items that are on the consent agenda that are not subject to a public hearing. So this would be specific to items that are not offering a public hearing, but are on either the regular agenda for that current meeting or the immediate, immediately previous meeting that has taken place. So a member of the public could come up and speak to an item that's not a public hearing on the current agenda or the immediately previous agenda. Just some general ground rules that have been adopted by the city of Bismarck. Typically, each member would be allowed five minutes. That could be extended at the discretion of the chair. And then a total public comment period, an allotment of 30 minutes, which could also be extended at the discretion of the chair. Generally, those are kind of the high points, but starting in August, you'll start to see basically this policy incorporated into all the agendas, so members of the public have an awareness of sort of the ground rules if they want to speak to non-public hearing items. There will also be, as I understand it, some laminated copies around this room, given the number of different public meetings that take place in this room. So probably not a big change for organizations or commissions like city of Bismarck and like Burley County, which I think, Burley County Commission, which I think already sort of offered this opportunity, just maybe a little bit more ground rules to it, but happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Commissioners, questions for Ben? Commissioner Shell?
Ben, in the agenda packet, we have a public hearing procedure and protocol document. Do you see an opportunity to revitalize that or change that or make some edits that kind of explain more of this process, how it would apply to a planning and zoning commission?
Yeah, thank you for that question. In fact, Daniel and I were just speaking about that before this meeting. I think we'll probably incorporate the policy just so the public understands the ground rules of what, you know, they might be expected to follow, but we'll provide, we'll have to provide some clarification that it's for non-public hearing-related items, so, and so thank you for that comment.
Commissioners, additional questions for Ben? Commissioners, then?
Ben, is that just verbal comments or could they also be said written comments at that?
The, they, so the policy is written for verbal comments. It allows, basically, it requires a window of opportunity to hear from the public, so it's intended for verbal comments. We, of course, allow, we as Planning and Zoning Commission, allow for written comments to be submitted up until 8:00 AM, the morning of a meeting, for it to be considered, for it to be distributed to you all by lunchtime, so.
Commissioners, additional questions? Ben, I'd like a little clarification for me, and that is just that it can be any item on the agenda for the current meeting or the previous meeting, and that would be the consent agenda as well as the regular agenda?
That is a non-public hearing item on the current agenda, and if it's from the immediate previous meeting, it's my understanding it could be any item. So there may have been, you know, a public hearing for it. You may have made a, you know, a decision, a recommendation on it. It's my understanding after that point, as long as it's on the previous agenda, regardless if it's a public hearing item or not, they can speak to it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification on that. Any additional questions? Commissioner Larson, you've got your brow furrow there.
I guess the previous agenda just seems confusing to me because by that point, we've, whatever, we've made a motion and a, yeah, but...
We've kind of had the similar comments, but that's the way the statute's written, so.